Okay, clock on the wall says six o'clock. We'll now start this meeting of November 18th, Pickwa Planning Commission. Please be advised that the Planning Commission acts as an administrative advisory body that both makes final decisions on certain matters and advises City Commission on other matters as specified by the procedures adopted by the City of Pickwa Code of Ordinances. Any with interest in speaking on an item should approach the lectern, state your name and address, and interest at the matter at hand. We ask all in attendance to please sign the book in the back of the room. And then, the order in which the business will be conducted tonight is as follows. A review of minutes of the previous meeting, review of any unfinished business, hearing a new business, review other business adjourned in the meeting. The hearing of each of the items will follow a modified Robert's Rules of Order as follows. Clerk to state the agenda item, staff to provide comments to the board, the applicant agent to provide comments to the board, other affected parties to provide comments to the board, board members to comment and ask for answers to any questions, the board to take action on the item, approving, denying, or tabling the appropriate motion. If there are no objections to the, from anyone in attendance to the aforementioned meeting procedures, would everyone please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Let it be known that all persons present to provide testimony at this current month, at this November 18th, meeting of the Planning Commission hereby swear or affirm said testimony be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. All those in agreement, say aye do.
Aye do.
All those opposed? Say opposed? Thank you, you may be seated. The Planning Commission has adopted policies and procedures to help keep meetings running smoothly and be transparent with the public about the process of the meetings. Excuse me, all Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and advised per City of Pickwa adopted policies. If you have not done so already, please sign the book in the back. We will have time for public comment on the cases being heard. Please keep your comment to three minutes or under and follow the policies, procedures of the Planning Commission which include: provide your name, address for the record, addressing the specific case at hand, not repeating the same thoughts or ideas on the topic, and showing respect for everyone in the room by utilizing appropriate language. Will clerk call the roll?
Mr. Brad Bupp.
Here.
Mr. Eddie Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Adam Sees.
Mr. Terry Wright.
Here.
Mr. Micah Underwood.
Well, let's make a motion to approve the absence of the two missing commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we do have a quorum to conduct business. Meeting from the last minutes were provided by the staff. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We don't need to call the roll since there's only three of us. Any old business before the commission? I don't think there is any either, so with that being said, we will move to the case to be heard, PC 25-24. Can staff please provide the report?
You want to read the resolution?
Resolution, PC 25-24, a resolution to recommend a zoning designation request for parcel
The staff report you have in front of you, I can go through that with any level of detail that you would like, but kind of the summary of it, this is a commercial mixed use property that the applicant is looking to split. They are looking to do duplexes in the back for senior living. This would be a potential replat of this lot. You would have the CX corridor mixed use zoning out on Keenly Drive, and then this portion back on the cul-de-sac would be a new development which would receive an all made address. The proposed zoning is similar to what is to the south of it and to the east. If you look on the next slide, Emily, the next slide kind of shows the overall. You can see the orange down below, it would be the same zoning, it would be contiguous. So, on that, the staff recommends approval of the rezoning request from CX to SRM with careful consideration given to the proposed development of relatively small sized senior apartments, they're right about 600 square feet. The unit size is modest, but there's a demonstrated demand for additional residential units in the community, particularly for multi-unit housing options catering to diverse demographics, including seniors. The proposed rezoning aligns with the city's broader goals of providing diverse housing options and meeting the needs of residents seeking more affordable or appropriately sized living arrangements. Additionally, this new zoning would be contiguous to other SRM zone properties located south of the parcel, providing a cohesive and compatible transition from mixed density housing to commercial use enhancing the overall character and connectivity of the area. However, staff recommends that the applicant provide additional information on unit design, amenities, and accessibility features to ensure the development offers suitable and attractive housing for the intended senior population. This due diligence will help maximize the positive impact of the project and ensure long-term community value.
Is the applicant or their agent here to speak on the issue?
Hello, I'm Michael Routson, it's my project, I'd be happy to answer any questions. 2980 Shawnee Trail, Pickwa.
Any other additional information you might have that we would need to know?
Not at this time.
Do you have an objection to offering the additional information that the staff is recommending?
No, be happy to give them what they want.
Okay, thank you, we may call you back up if we need to.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, discussion here amongst us? Anybody have any problems with the staff's recommendation including the additional information Okay, then let's have a motion to approve it along with the additional information as stated by the staff recommendation. This is 25-24.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Let's call the roll, all three of us.
Mr. Harvey.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Bupp.
Aye. So, number PC 25-24 is accepted along with the additional information required by the, or suggested by the staff report.
And it looks like that'll go December 3rd to City Commission. And I'll be in touch, I'll email or I'll let you guys know.
Okay, on to the next one, which is, if I'm not mistaken, 26-24. Will the, well, first read the motion?
Resolution 26-24, a resolution to recommend a zoning designation request for parcel N
And then the staff, summary and, and then report and summary.
Say, you know, like the other one, I can, I can answer any specific questions, but kind of the long and short of this is, as you know, we put a new zoning map and ordinance in effect in May of 2023. When someone was doing the diligence on this property, this is the Wyman's property off to the west side of Looney Road, we found that that area, or that parcel did not receive zoning when they switched over. Originally, it had always been B for business. When we adopted the new zoning, we created two zoning districts. One was a corridor mixed use, which is a smaller lot, set up for multiple businesses, whatever, and we created RX, which was a regional, which is basically created for your Home Depots, your Walmarts, your larger lots. So, when the bank was unable to get zoning for this property, they had to halt the appraisal, and it was basically brought to us. So I took it upon myself, I contacted the applicant and said that I would be bringing this to commission. I felt it was necessary to assign this with a CX corridor mixed use zoning district. I emailed and asked them if they had an objection to that, but we basically, we need to assign a zoning to this property, and I felt that was the best one. It is contiguous with everything else, but obviously the recommendation, I'm the one that applied for it, but we recommended approval of the rezoning request. It's based upon several key considerations. It aligns with the 2023 zoning code update, which established CX district to support a blend of commercial and residential uses along the arterial and major collector corridors. Bringing the parcel into this designation ensures consistency with surrounding properties in the intended land use framework of the area. Again, if there's any further questions, I can elaborate on that.
So basically, this is just an accidental omission on our part?
Yes.
Okay, so the applicant is actually the city?
Yeah.
And I assume that pretty well takes care of that. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Okay, at that point, I'll entertain a motion to approve 26-24.
So moved.
We got a movement, wait a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Bupp.
Aye.
Mr. Harvey.
Aye.
Okay, that being said, next one I have is PC 27-24. Can you read the application?
Resolution, PC 27-24, a resolution to recommend a zoning designation request for parcels M 40041750, M 40041800, M 40041900, M 40041850, M 40042000, M 40042010, M 40011610, M 40011650, and M 40012000.
Could be the most zeros I've ever heard in one, in one thing. Can we have the staff report summary and recommendation?
No, I'm not going to read those parcels, but I'm glad we established the precedent of her reading the request. So this is an application by the Pickwa Land Company to rezone 329.824 acres into industrial heavy, the IH district. The parcels are bound by Drake Road to the north, Farrington to the south, and Washington to the east. This is contiguous with current existing zoning. Per the map, there is some RE 20 that sits at the back of the Fox Drive Sherry Development. The next adjacent land is well north, and there is the, the solar farm, or the solar panels, which is an AG Ag. And then adjacent to that is the RE 6, it would be the lower half of the Arbor Home On this, again, I can answer whatever questions, or if the applicant's here, they can do so as well, but the, the staff recommendation, we recommended approval of the request to rezone the newly annexed parcel to IH Heavy Industry. It's based upon, it's, it's consistent with the city's broader goals of promoting industrial growth and economic development, particularly in areas designated for large-scale industrial uses. The IH zoning district is well sitzed to accommodate heavy industrial operations such as manufacturing, distribution, and large-scale warehousing, which are expected to align with the property's size and location. The newly annexed area presents a strategic opportunity to enhance the city's industrial base. The IH designation will allow the parcel to be developed for industries that can generate significant employment opportunities, stimulate economic activity, and contribute to the city's tax base through property taxes, business revenue, and associated employment taxes. The zoning change will enable the city to attract large-scale industrial users that are compatible with the surrounding area, thereby optimizing land use and fostering job growth. This will provide economic benefits not only through direct tax revenues, but also by supporting secondary business activity in sectors such as logistics, transportation, and supply chain management. Finally, the proposed zoning change is consistent with the city's long-term economic development plan, which emphasizes diversification and expansion of the industrial sector. It will facilitate appropriate development that maximizes the parcel's potential while minimizing potential conflicts with residential or commercial land uses. For these reasons, again, staff recommends that Planning Commission forward the recommendation of approval to the City Commission for the rezoning of the newly annexed 329-acre parcel to IH.
Does the applicant or the applicant's agent hear and wish to speak?
Good evening. Brian Stone, 684 Macon Alley, Columbus, Ohio, here on behalf of Camino Development and the Pickwa Land Company in support of the zoning change.
Thanks for making the trip.
No problem.
What can you tell us that we don't know?
Well, I do think that city staff has done a good job laying out the, the reasons that we think that the proposed zoning change is a good idea for the City of Pickwa, but I'm happy to make myself available to answer any questions or provide any additional background information that, that you might require during your review.
Is there a project potential, and you don't have to say what it is, but is there a project potential in mind for this, or is it just speculative at this point?
Well, it is, I wouldn't call it speculative, but we haven't, we haven't engaged with a specific end user to, to redevelop the property. Our goal is to create a master-planned area within the City of Pickwa to attract companies that will stimulate private capital investment, create high-paying jobs, and expand the tax base for the community and the schools. You know, we, at the outset, really looked at the entire state of Ohio and quickly zeroed in on the City of Pickwa. The city itself has gone a long way to laying the groundwork to make itself competitive as a potential location for an economic development project. So commend you on the work that you've done, and appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening.
We've recently had some issues with some environmental items, and we won't go into that, but I assume that in all this development, that's all taken care of, that there won't be any undue runoffs, or smoke, or, you know, air hazards, or anything like that involved in any of this heavy industrial?
Absolutely.
Did you say how many jobs that you would, were considering bringing in with this?
Well, like, like I said, we're not talking about a specific proposed project. What we're talking about here is a simple rezoning of the property from its existing township agricultural use to the IH heavy industry use, which is, you know, the, the Pickwa Materials property is already zoned, we're contiguous to that, so we think that it makes a lot of sense to, to do the rezoning. Generally speaking, the types of industries that we look at include tech manufacturing and other tech-focused businesses, and they generally fall into two buckets. One that brings a lot of high-paying, high-paying jobs, and the other that brings a significant capital investment, not only in the land, but in the capital improvements that they, that they're, the end user would end up bringing to bear into the community, which represent a long-term commitment to investing in the community.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, we'll, we'll reserve the right to call you back up if we have to.
Sounds like a plan, thanks.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this issue?
Keith Shower, 5730 North Washington Road. We have a couple thousand feet of frontage on the opposite side of the road. So we have a pretty big concern about what this is all going to look like, and I have a concern about how this has been brought to our attention. The letters we got from the Planning Commission in this last week is the first contact we have had from the city about annexation or the development here. I have big questions about...
Hold on just a moment. Mr. Henry, were all the city regulations followed in notifying neighbors?
Yes, we, initially, we posted the agenda the day after the deadline, and then the packet was available, I believe it was last Monday. That would be the Friday before, actually. It's a Monday, right? Yeah, it's the Friday before, I'm sorry, I don't have the date. Yes, answer.
Unfortunately, they didn't what they have to do. Yeah, go ahead.
What, was the township, Mr. Henry, was the township instructive of any way of the property owners, or what was going to be done out there, what could be done out there?
I can't answer that. The only thing... One of these is going to work, right? There it is. I don't know why there's eight of them. So the answer, again, the, the way that it was advertised is the same as we would advertise anything, so anyone that was within a certain distance would be advertised to. This evening, what the request is, is dealing with the actual zoning designation. The annexation petition has nothing to do with the zoning designation. That is done by property owners, they go forward with the, the township and through the county through a different process. This zoning designation request deals with what happens when that annexed land comes into the City of Pickwa, it has to have a zoning designation. So, this is again, a recommendation to the City Commission. The City Commission is the body then that would authorize, formally authorize that request. So, the annexation is done by the owner of the property, the city doesn't have anything to do with that. That is an owner of a property's decision, which, again, that 300 acres is, is the owner of that property is requesting that annexation into the City of Pickwa. What we are doing here this evening is responding to that request by designating a zoning district upon that when it is brought into the city.
So sir, I, I guess I, I understand your concern a lot, and I enjoy watching you work out in your yard when I go right by there. But I would say that as far as how it's going to look and how it's going to work, that's a long way out, and we will have the opportunity to review that when that happens. So, you know, when they have an actual entity that wants to come in and develop across from you somewhere, if that even happens, we will have a chance to look at that, yourself included, and respond accordingly if there's something you find disagreeable at that point.
The ensuing concerns that we have then are with regard to property values and tax levels that we are going to have to deal with one way or another. So we would like to get some information on that.
Do we have indications of how that will impact neighbors?
Again, I mean, the request this evening is a zoning designation, so there's a, a lot of, that IH designation could, could have different users, so I, I don't know that there's any way that we could forecast how that would be, one way or the other. In terms of property values and, and those things, I mean, again, generally, properties that have heavy investment into them, property values go up around that, but that would be speculative, the market obviously would determine the values based on once something is developed. Commercial development, industrial development, generally speaking, have much higher property values than agriculture or residential. So, the actual property values in the area likely would go up if it were to be developed, but again, unfortunately, that's a little speculative because we don't, we don't know what that looks like as of now. The request this evening is just to have the zoning designation placed upon it. As you noted, the development, if and when it comes, will come back before the Planning Commission, it will come back before the City Commission, the plat will come back before the Planning Commission, and will come back before the City Commission. There'll be many opportunities for additional comment and discussion about the details of any particular development. Unfortunately, this evening, those details are not available because the request is pretty high-level, just asking for the zoning designation.
So I think your comments are due noted, though, and we'll be looking at that.
That would be my primary concern, that we're on record with the concerns, and that you all know, and that we have contact over that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have something different to say?
Jonathan Wessel, 1820 Eagles Lake Drive. I do have a question, might not get an answer, and that is, if any city staff has signed a non-disclosure agreement as relates to this specific parcel, and either relating to the annexation, the rezoning, or what the future plans for that property may look like, just asking if they have signed an NDA related to this.
A non-disclosure?
That's correct, a non-disclosure agreement, as in...
To not tell what they know, basically?
That's correct. I mean, if, if you listen to our planning department, they essentially just get applications, and they type it up, and they bring it here. My guess is that's not true, like, I'm sure that, they're very busy all day, but if by, but what they say in these meetings indicates that they just, they just know nothing, they just, I don't know, we just got an application, and we're just bringing it to you, because that's the procedure, and we fired, you know, followed the minimum requirements of the law, and, and that's it. So, that's my question, is whether or not they've signed a non-disclosure agreement. I think the answer is yes, it'd be pretty telling that they probably know more than what they're letting on. Thank you.
I, I can't answer, can you guys?
No. I'm, I'm not aware, I guess this is how would I would answer.
I, I think it's so early in the process that really nobody knows. We're just talking about the zoning, we're not talking about anything else in this particular motion here, so it's a very first step. Even the develop, I assume you're the developer, even the developer doesn't have an idea of what's coming in from what he says.
They don't have to disclose it.
He doesn't? Well, yeah, he does. Well, yeah, he does. It's worth telling the truth, nothing but the truth.
Yeah. What I will say is that the development of any property, there's planning that goes into that. So we do have ideas as to, you know, the potential things that could potentially be located on this property, but we do not have any signed agreements with any end-users. What we're talking about right now is not a specific project. As Kyle said, there's a specific process that deals with the approval of a specific project where questions like that get answered. All we're talking about right now is, you know, a straight-line rezoning of the property from its existing township zoning to the heavy industrial zoning.
Will that suffice? Okay. Anyone else have something other to say?
I would just throw out before he speaks, but we basically, I have not signed an NDA, but when we're contacted to rezone something, we have a list of what can be done in that IH district. And when they find that use, they know what that use is going in. So anything they do is going to be subject to getting approval per that. This is not asking for a rezoning of a current. They're wanting to do something that's permitted in this district.
Harley Steffen, 4474 West Brown Road. Here speaking on behalf of my mother. She's on Washington Road, where it wraps around that, goes to Drake Road. Would the Washington Road and Drake Road homes be required to hook onto the city's water and sewer?
I can't answer that. Can you guys?
The answer is no. It's very likely that utilities will be provided for whatever users are there, so I would imagine that opportunity would be available if somebody wanted to take it, but there'd be no obligation to do so. That would be a decision of a property owner if they wanted to have water and sewer from the city of Pickwa. If they didn't, you have a great well, and you have, you know, great septic, then there's going to be no obligation. I don't believe we would obligate anyone to that. But I do believe, for those that do want it, if we're putting water and sewer there, we'll probably give them an opportunity to take that if they wished. If they don't want to, there'd be no obligation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dottie Lane, 5748 Drake Road, Pickwa, Ohio. Actually, my question is for the person, this entity, that's wanting to purchase this property, or, and also, you guys, we have 25A corridor, all this industrial area that's been designated for that, and I don't see anything going in there, and nothing's gone in there. And then, all of a sudden, we have an agricultural group, I mean, area, and somebody's wanting it. And, yeah, you can say, well, it's going to give jobs to the city, but our countryside view is going to change. And I just don't know why you would not choose that corridor as opposed to, I mean, agricultural site.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can't speak to, you know, other communities and other potential properties that are, you know, available along the corridor. What I can say is that when we were looking at not only the greater Dayton region, but really the entire state of Ohio, we did a deep dive into the communities that we were looking at, and the city of Pickwa. It really does jump off the page as a community that has the right mindset to support the type of tech manufacturing and tech-focused economic development projects that we specialize in. So I can't speak to why those other properties haven't sold and haven't been redeveloped, but we're very confident in the ability, not only the city of Pickwa, to field that type of development, but the property itself to support it.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, Mike Heiser, 5615 Drake Road. Overall, I think it's a good idea for Pickwa. I mean, it makes a good move, but I'm on this side of Drake Road, and the land comes like 50 feet from my back door. I guess what I'm wondering is, I know they've bought up several properties, and I was wondering who I could talk to about possibly buying a little bit more land or selling my property because, unlike what they said, property values are going to drop, I believe, and I'm paying a buku taxes now. But I didn't know if you could put me in touch. Possibly this gentleman could.
I guess, as a developer, you guys will actually be purchasing that land, eventually?
The subject property, yes, but sir-
There's your man.
Yeah. I can talk to you after.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Becky McGilvery, 5900 Drake Road. I'm right on the curve, right across from Sherry. We get deer that come up there through that field. They're in my yard every day, especially right now. What's going to happen to them? We get a lot of water that comes off that farmland. When it rains heavy, comes down into Drake Road, down into my yard and across from us. What's going to happen?
What's going to happen to the flora and fauna?
They go tearing all of that up. What's going to happen to my property? I face it.
They're not allowed to do anything that increases the water onto adjacent properties.
Okay, not allowed, but yet they don't know what they're doing yet, and they won't tell us.
Well, they don't know yet, but whenever it gets developed, they're not permitted by EPA regulations.
It makes no sense for somebody to go buy a property not knowing what they're going to put on it.
He's a developer. They do that all the time. They're speculative.
Well, I recommend that, we're all against this.
Well, I appreciate your comment.
Vicki Smith, 5811 North Washington Road. I'm almost at the corner of Drake and Washington. That road already is so busy, and I know it's county, but I want to know how much more traffic that this is going to run through there.
Again, you're putting the cart before the horse. We're just talking about the zoning right now.
I know what you're talking about, but we're all trying-
They don't have any idea what's going in there, nor how many people that will employ-
Well, if it's going to be, eventually, it's going to be industrial or whatever. That's a lot of land. That's a lot of, you know, factory and everything else, and Washington Road is already so busy. I want to know how much more traffic that's going to be because, and I know you can't control that, but I've almost got hit on that road going to my mailbox, and it's already busy. So I want to know if, you know, if you're going to get with the county at some point in time, and when you annex, is the annex going to go, is that going to bring the city limits out past there?
I am sure that part of this development will be traffic studies to incorporate that information and to work with the county if the road needs widening, if the road needs improved, whatever it needs to accommodate anything like that would be part of this whole development. And again, we're just now talking about the zoning only. We don't know what's going in there. If it's tech jobs, I hope it is, that's great.
Well, my point is, no matter what goes in there, you're going to have some eyes and everything else coming from Lord knows who's nowhere, you know, Lord knows where. Are they going to be using the interstate mostly and using 25A and Farrington to get into there? You know?
Again-
I mean, that's my question.
I understand, and that's yet to be determined.
Well, I'm with her. Not too many of us are too happy about it, so, just my input.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm glad they're trying to bring industry in, but it's just getting a little bit too close to the properties, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's almost like, going to be like living in the city again. I bought my house in the country for a reason.
Understand.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Any questions the commission may have? Again, remember, commission, we're just looking at zoning. We don't know what it is yet. We don't know any of these impacts yet, but that all will come before us when that is concluded. So personally, I don't see why the zoning can't be approved. That doesn't really affect, you know, how it gets developed. Excuse me. You need to speak? Come before the mic and state your name. Doesn't really affect, zoning itself doesn't affect any of that. The particulars are what affect most people's concerns, and they are yet to be determined. So that's my opinion. You guys certainly welcome to have your own. But I will, if we don't have any more questions or concerns, entertain a motion to approve, what number is this, 27-24 As Stated. I'll make the motion to approve 27-24 As Stated, just the zoning. And again, it goes before the city commission, so we're not the final rule on this.
You made a motion?
Huh?
You made a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Becky McGilvery, why would we rezone if we don't know what's going to go in there? Why would we do that?
We never do when there's a development. That's how they work. They're speculating that they can develop that. Did you state your name and address again?
Becky McGilvery, 5900 Drake Road.
Okay. It's recorded on audio only, so that's why I asked that. I'm not trying to be mean.
No, that's all right. I just don't understand. If they can't give us more information, why would we want to rezone?
Otherwise, it's not worth their time continuing. In other words, that's the first step. If they can't get that, then they're gone. They'll go to some other city where there are more friendly to-
So why would you recommend?
Because we're just dealing with zoning, and the other stuff, particulars about your concerns and the water and the other concerns, it's all still yet to come to us, where we can react, change it, massage it, work with the developer to-
So you live in Pickwa?
Do I live in Pickwa?
So you want to see that coming there and-
I want to see great, high-paying jobs that are in Pickwa that help the tax base and help all of us.
That would be great if we had workers, but we don't, so that's not even really going to matter.
If we had more what?
Workers. People don't work nowadays.
They don't?
No.
Well, that's funny. We had the lowest unemployment we've had in 50 years.
Well, that's funny, because we've had, at our company, a very low turnout of people. We get them for a week or two, they're gone.
You've got to pay them for what they're worth.
So you want to bring jobs? You've got to find people for that.
And hopefully with new housing that is respectable and nice, that we can attract high-paying jobs and high-paying individuals that want to live in a great community, and that's what we are. But that's aside the point. Again, we're just talking about the zoning. This is the first step in any development, and I'm not trying to be mean. I do want to address your concerns.
Does the city always approve rezonings before they even know what's going to happen?
Yes, because the developers, well, as far as I'm concerned, yes. As far as I have experience with, and I've been here longer than anyone, yes, because that's the developer's first step, that if they can't get that, they're not going to waste any more money and time going any further. That's just how it works.
I'd just like to make a note, because I think it's important. Again, the city is not doing anything here. The actual property owner is the annexation. They, when they're annexing into the city, which is what is happening, we are obligated to give it a zoning designation. So what the conversation is, is what that zoning designation is. And so, again, the request is to have it meet the same zoning designation as what is to the east of that. That is really the request. Again, the city isn't, we have to react to that action, right? The city is not the party that is asking to be annexed. That is the property owner. So, again, I just wanted to be clear on that. The city is not forcing the annexation. That is a decision of a property owner.
The ones that are selling their property to him?
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we were in the middle of, did we get a second? You did, didn't you?
No, I was asking you a question.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you take the vote, please?
Mr. Wright?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
So motion number 2724 to establish a zoning designation is approved.
It'll be recommended to the city commission meeting on December 3rd. I just want to be clear.
Okay.
As well as the other one. All three of these will be on December 3rd, so if you come to the December 3rd meeting, you'll get all three of them.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that is the last one. So anything else the city may have for us?
I would just say, I would just reaffirm, as we said, any sort of development that comes through, it needs to be from the list of things that are acceptable uses, and that any sort of business that goes in, we calculate not only for the parking of how many people are going to be there, we take into consideration the traffic as well. We perform a traffic impact study to make sure that public utilities are taken care of. We make sure that we can provide enough water to it. We can treat the sanitary. All of that has to be done. No rainwater can leave that site any faster than it did without anything on it. So all of that is stuff that is going to come back through government to be reviewed with recommendations, and that'll all be in the public eye as well. On top of that, the next meeting, is this the one we set a different date for, or is this one as scheduled?
I think it's the 11th, isn't it? December 11th?
I thought maybe she would remember, because I didn't.
I don't either.
December 11th.
Oh, I do. Let's hear it.
Right, nice job. But I just wanted to make sure that we knew, with, obviously, with November and December, we always kind of get pushed around a little bit by city commission.
I think it should be, we should pass a motion that the city commission is not allowed to change their dates.
Right.
So that we can all proceed forward in an orderly fashion.
I just wanted to note one thing as we end the year. City staff is also working on code text amendments. As our development code is a little over a year old now, we continually are finding changes that are necessary. So as this, I'd love to tell you, as the time slows down, we will spend more time working on those code changes, but for better or worse, we are very busy. But we are looking over the winter to try to get some of those code reviews done, and we will hopefully be bringing you those in the first quarter of next year, really dealing with some of the nuances with our sign code, some other definitions and some other things that we found. So we will continue to work on that, but just to give you a heads up and something to look forward to, in the first quarter, there'll be some code text changes we're looking at.
And I think, to piggyback on that, there has been some that have come up in some of these meetings that you may want to glance through the notes that we look at those.
Absolutely. If there are any specific items that need to be reviewed, please let us know, and we'll add them to our list.
I wish I could remember those, but-
It'll be 3:00 AM one morning.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Huh?
Who's second?
With three of us, I don't think we need a second.
Aye.
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 Is the next meeting December 11th?
It is December 11th.
Thank you, everybody. Seriously, we will consider your ideas.